Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Palmer Town Council meeting. It is Monday, June 12th. It is 6:32, and I call this meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna start with visitors' comments, and this is for anything that is not on the agenda. If you have any visitors' comments, I just asked that you come up to the microphone, state your name and your address for the record. Okay.
Right up to the mic, sir.
I'm Dr. Robert Singleton. Anything I've achieved in my lifetime has come through the town of Palmer. Two teachers that I had, Frances Ream, who's passed away, and Mrs. Kavanaugh. These are the people that guided me when I came up from South Carolina. When I left school in the 10th grade, I immediately went in the Army in the paratroopers, came back, shot up, and decided I'd do something with my life. I went fishing. I have a degree in oceanography. I've written six books. I have a new children's books coming out, and I work with disabled veterans because I am a 100% disabled veteran. My entire left arm is paralyzed from shrapnel. This town has been wonderful, and this gentleman has done a great job. We found a problem with sewage going into the river, and he stopped it immediately. Now, I stand before you knowing that an organization that I'm associated with, which has about 4,000 veterans, we need a place, and we were looking at the Palmer, the Converse Street Palmer High School building. It'd be perfect for us. It's a bus stop. It's right there. It's right off Mass Pike. And I tell you, folks, some of these veterans don't have anything. A lot of them are in wheelchairs. Some of them are blind. Majority of them are crippled. But this high school building is a perfect spot for them. I believe that I would like the town to take into consideration about this building and letting us at least have access to it or finding a way that we can get in there to do our job. It's perfectly located. We've looked at it. It's... I can't think of a better spot in New England for it. And I want to thank you for your consideration. Now, your town manager, one I've been able to work for him is dead on. I've mentioned a couple of things to get done, and he's had them done right away, and I truly appreciate it. He's a good man. But getting ahold of him sometimes is a little difficult. Listen, I want to thank you for your consideration. Deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Sir, yeah, we... Few questions?
What exactly are you hoping to do at the school with the veterans and...
I'm sorry, sir.
What are you actually trying to do at the school with the veterans?
For the veterans.
That's... Would you like to tell them what we do?
Housing?
We feed people.
Right.
We feed people and we take care of them. But basically, a lot of these people don't have anything. And they come to this organization, and we have access to farms and stores, and we're able to give them 50 pounds of food each week. And this is a good thing. A lot of these guys are in their 70s and 80s and early 90s, and they're living next to nothing. And this is what we do. We supply food to them.
Can we have the name of the organization that you work with?
That's...
Yeah, the organization that you referred to is Mass Military Support Foundation.
Ryan, do you have any details? Or is this the first you've heard of this? Okay.
Would there be beds in there or just come to receive food? Or all kinds of aid?
Just food. Just food at this point. Food and some clothing.
Food and clothing.
Would they be bused there and it's like a pickup spot?
It would be like a pickup store. Like coming to a store, and the director would be giving veterans advice as to if they needed any help or anything in particular. He would give them advice.
It's like support system type thing?
Basically, food support. And the kitchen is available for us providing boxes of food.
Meals to Go type things? And would it be an ongoing thing or once a day?
There are only certain days a week that the food is available. It would be three days a week. And there would be a group of volunteers that would be working to set it up at certain hours on certain days. So it would be a day time event, maybe three days a week.
Sounds wonderful.
I can answer your questions. I just want to be clear that I came out here as a support for Dr. Singleton and those from Palmer. I'm not really prepared as a team comping path of the organization, but I can answer some of your questions if you'd like, as long as that's clear.
I would think at this point, we need to review what you just handed us and so that we can... The same point as you just addressed. We're not familiar with it, but obviously, we'd like to take it under advisement and see...
Your books are awesome.
Common ground.
I met you before.
Yes, you have.
Yeah, yeah. How are you, sir?
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you for your service. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I thank the guys, and I wish we didn't come back.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Are there any other visitors' comments? Yep, yes. Mr. Cosbider. They have agenda items that they're here for.
Steve Cosbider, Thorndyke? Okay, let's talk about Converse School. What's the status of Converse School right now?
Some rental to the public, right? That's pretty much it? Not really? He said, "What's the status of Converse School?" And I said, "Some rental to the public," right? We rent some space to public?
As of right now, I don't know of any spa... Well, yeah, the gym, the gymnasium.
Right. But other than that, it's not open to the public?
Because of issues, because we can't have the building open to the public because of building issues.
Okay. Now, suppose there was a feasibility study done. Where did that end up?
It did get complete.
Right. Yes, we had a code review study done.
And?
It was astronomical.
And it was reported to the council. And it was reported to the council.
And?
The price was very, very high to bring the building up to code.
Okay, so...
So another word...
We're reviewing our options on what to do.
Because you're looking at well into $10 million.
Remodel it.
Exactly. No, not to remodel it, to bring it up to code.
Just bring it up to code.
So that it could then be used for a specific purpose.
Housing, whatever.
Has it been appraised?
Yeah. Yeah, it's appraised, though.
What's been appraised at?
It was appraised at $1.8 million.
$1.8 million. So was there any thought about selling it?
Yep.
Yes, everything's on the table at this point.
Is it for sale?
It is not at this point.
Not at this point? Okay, I got a proposal, and these people here might be interested. Sell Memorial Hall. Sell Converse. Remodel Thorne Dye Grammar School. Build a senior center at Thorne Dye Grammar School. All the infrastructure is there. There are plenty of parking. People like the veterans, which are mostly senior citizens now, would be available to them also. You kill about four birds in one shot. I think this is a legitimate proposal that could be looked at. All right? I mean, maybe talking $4 million for a building like that. Considering it was, what, $8 million for the police station?
Somewhere about that.
So...
Thank you.
You know?
Yeah.
Do people consider that at all?
At this point, we are considering... We have all of the options on the table for Converse. Selling it, keeping it, you know, and everything in between.
Because that's been going on for, what, eight years now, too?
We're well aware.
Uh, yep.
And, no.
Right.
No progress. Probably poured in, what, $300,000 in heating costs and maintenance and stuff?
Plus, sure. Plus that.
And the maintenance of the building is increasing every year. So we are... We're very well aware of the, you know, the burden on the town.
进度的 progress run very slow here.
They do. It's a process. We tried to put it out to senior housing once, two, three years ago, I believe. We got absolutely zero taken.
Back when I was an intern here, before I was even on the council, one of my first jobs was to review an RFP for senior housing at Converse Middle School, and I was an intern here six years ago. So I understand.
Okay, because it doesn't seem like there's any action about Thorne Dye Grammar School.
Right, well...
Obviously, it's gonna get torn down at some point.
That costs a boatload, too.
I realize that.
Right.
But it's probably asbestos in there. At some point, it's gonna come down.
Right.
Nobody's gonna be buying it. I mean, you said, what, three people looked at it? At least? Didn't you tell me that? You showed it to three people and...
I've showed it to, I don't know, a dozen people.
A dozen people.
Right.
Yep.
So...
Yeah.
I intend to pursue this if I have to. Or a senior center.
Do you wanna buy it?
Even if you have to buy it yourself?
No, I'm gonna pursue it. I'm gonna pursue it here.
Yeah.
No, yes.
Always welcome.
No, I mean...
We appreciate it, yes.
I would think, you know, after the Thorne Dye Bridge, you've still got $4 million in a stabilization fund.
$4 million will not be enough to do much.
I realize that, but you could take some money from the stabilization fund, offset the cost of a senior center and you can bond.
Yep.
Right.
I mean...
So the senior centers...
That exclude and raise the tax rate?
Right. The senior center is on... The senior center's on the radar. We know that that's in the near future. The DPW is also a big issue.
I realize that, but...
Right.
What seems to be happening is when the special interest groups come knocking, they seem to be taken care of right away. You know?
Not aware of any special interest groups.
I won't get into it.
Okay. But no, your point is heard, and we appreciate you coming to the council and expressing that. Thank you.
Now, get out of here.
We'd love to wave a magic wand and make all the problems disappear, but it's not that easy.
Well, I mean...
Like the school you're talking... I know, I went to school there. I remember all the asbestos pipes in there and the cafeteria downstairs. Hard to sell something to somebody that it's not gonna be profitable for them to turn it into apartments or a senior center or whatever, you know?
I don't know what could happen.
Yeah, you know, so...
You get a busload one of these days, and that's it, you know?
Right. And we want to prevent what happened in Three Rivers, where we sold the building and now it sits vacant and...
Right. The town sold that building twice.
Sold the building, it sits vacant, but this one is still owned.
By the town.
Have control of it.
Right.
So I would appreciate your consideration, and I will be around to discuss it some more.
Great. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Okay.
As a... I'm not a business owner, but I'm a business manager. And when I came to... I had to go to the planning board to fill out some paperwork, and I think I'm done, and she says, "Well, now you gotta go over to the tax collector. Get a business license. This is gonna cost you $50. Can somebody bring light on that? What is the $50 for?"
Administrative fees, right?
To register the business in town, to register the business in town.
Right to do business in town.
The registrers.
To register the business in town.
Register business in town.
It's standard across every city in town in Massachusetts. I think it's through the town clerk's office.
Pay an $800 fee to do business. This is like a tax on a tax.
What's the $800?
What is the $800?
For a liquor license.
Well, that's a separate...
Totally different.
That's correct.
That's a separate license, right?
It's still a business. You can't run your business without paying the fee. Now, you call it... I got a tax or a fee?
A fee.
That's a fee.
It's really a tax.
Tax is the property tax that you pay on the property, right?
But this is also... I just don't get the $50. I'm sorry.
You get a 10% discount if you have a Red Sox shirt on.
Well, it's just another... It's a license that...
It's another fee on top of a fee.
Carl, that's your best one yet.
But again, you've been heard. Thank you so much for coming and speaking to us. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Is there any other visitors' comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the minutes for April 10th. Does anybody have any comments?
I don't know.
I didn't.
Okay. Was everybody here for that meeting? So we...
Right now.
Yes, okay. Just... We have enough votes for it. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes for April 10th?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have the minutes for May 8th. Is there any comments or questions on that? Were we all there for that meeting?
I was.
Everybody here was.
Yes, okay.
I don't see Mark or Barbara.
Again, I know that... Yep, okay. My only comment on that... Those meeting minutes were under the resolution for the sewer surplus for the new forklift. There was a little bit more discussion under there about... I would just like it noted the age of the current forklift and the fact that it hadn't been included in any capital plan, at least to what I had seen. And that was a point of discussion just as a way to emphasize the importance of having that capital plan and the fact that the sewer rate study that had just happened didn't include that in there either.
Okay.
Yeah. So that is my amendment.
So I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Is there any old business? Seeing none, we will now have the superintendent of Pathfinder, Mr. Eric Duda, come to the council to discuss the acquisition of the former Country Bank right here on the corner.
All right, perfect. Thank you, council members, and thank you, Town Manager McNutt. Appreciate your always collaborating and appreciate your support and everybody else here, too. It's good to see everybody working and everything in action tonight. So the good news is I'm not asking for any money from you or anything, really, that's gonna cost anything. So that's a good thing. But the Pathfinder Regional District, as you know, we're right around the corner here. We've been growing, and we have a high demand, which we're happy about with enrollment. A lot of Palmer students go there as well, which is a good thing. Sometimes I have to remind our towns that they own the school, and that's a Palmer... That's a Palmer school, as well as eight other towns own that school. And Palmer Schools is a Palmer school as well. So the taxpayers and the residents of this town and the eighth graders looking to be ninth graders have two options, either school system. With the limited square footage we have, we were actively looking at options, and the Country Bank property over on the four corners has been closed for a while. And two things kind of came to light. One, it's a shame to see a nice property like that that we've all enjoyed perhaps go into disarray when it's not being used. And two, we need some more square footage. So what we're looking to do is... Right now, the potential plan is, and it could evolve over time, is to use that for office space and an expansion of our evening programming offices as well, which is a good thing for the community here, especially because a lot of our interest comes from Palmer residents. So we're in active conversations now with the Country Bank people, and we're looking to get the property for a very, very viable price, which is virtually nothing or donated. So we're very happy about that. Being a regional school district and having nine towns, there's a requirement that there's support from the town where we're acquiring property. So in this case, it's the town of Palmer, and in this case, it's a town council. So I'm here before you tonight looking for a vote and a motion of support for us to seek out and get this property. And Town Manager McNutt has the wording on that motion. Happy to... Happy to answer any questions.
My daughter, who's in Cosmos, said it would make a great salon, by the way.
Easy access, that's for sure.
Yeah, in and out.
Mainly to free up more space at the school by utilizing that for offices, correct, is what?
Yeah, I mean, we're expanding on our thought process right now of what we would use it for. But right now, the idea is to use it for office space and evening programming space, which would free up space at the school. And that space is really, really needed with the limited square footage we have.
Now, you said you had continuing ed or adult?
Yeah, we started programming this year. We started plumbing and electrical, two cohorts, and we wrote a grant for that. We had a $280,000 state grant to run two programs and two cohorts of 12 and 12, so 24 participants. And then we're doing that again. The grant goes again for the following year, so there was no immediate burden to any of the taxpayers on their assessments this year. So we're proud of that. And that's gonna run through September of '24. And then we'll be seeking more opportunities for more funding, and we're expanding other programs beyond that. And the planned launch of those is in the fall. So they'll be kind of... These are longer cohorts, like as far as hours go. So they're closer to like 200 hours or more, and they're leading to employment and licensure. But the other courses we're looking at running right now are smaller, like CPR training and EMT training and looking at Carl over here, SERF Safe, things like that. Those are the things that we're considering.
Awesome.
That's really good.
So after this vote of support, what happens?
So the school committee comprised of 12 members total right now, two of which are from Palmer, has already, you know, reviewed this and given the support to move forward. So after this, I'll finalize the arrangement with the Country Bank for savings and acquire the property in the near future. This has been many months in the works, but we're at a point now where I wanted to bring it before you.
Sounds great.
I've actually met with Brett Locassio of Cicero from Country Bank about trying to retain the ATM machine and relocate it to Town Hall Campus.
Ooh, that'd be good.
Yeah, so we've looked at a couple spots. We have the challenge of maintaining the travel lanes for the police. The challenge of the thing needs dedicated power to it, so we gotta find something that's close to a power drop and still has enough area. So those conversations are ongoing.
Okay.
Thank you.
That sounds good. That's definitely a well-used ATM.
Yes, ATM, correct.
My question is, why is it considered a non-binding vote, I guess?
Because I don't think in their regional agreement... I think they just seek a supportive vote. I don't think they're seeking... I don't think a vote can prevent them from doing the transaction.
Right.
So if we were to vote against this, they would still be able to go through with it?
I'm not sure on that, to be honest with you. But we are looking for a vote of support.
Right, right, yes.
The news is without...
I mean, hypothetically, like if we were, you know, to vote against it. I think that's what Phil's question was, like hypothetically, what would happen?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that.
I just figured...
We weren't thinking... We didn't have that mindset.
It would be a binding vote when we said yes or no, that that would be a binding type of...
It would be a vote of support.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, which is required, as I mentioned, as a regional district to get from the host town.
Yep.
Do you need a letter from us? A signed letter also, or just looking for a...
I think the minutes will be sufficient.
Sure.
Okay.
Showing the affirmative vote.
Cool, yeah. All right.
I make a motion.
Well, actually, we have the language here that Bob's gonna read.
Motion to approve Pathfinder Regional Vocational Technical High School District to acquire through purchase or donation the property located at 191 Sykes Street, Palmer, Mass, currently owned by Country Bank for Savings.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
There we go.
Two quick points before we wrap this up. One, in full disclosure, One, um, in full disclosure, I'm gonna abstain only because I'm on the school committee at Pathfinder. And I have also, in two separate occasions, spoken to Councilors Kochi and Barry, and they are in full support as well. So although they're not here tonight, it would have been unanimous. However, I'd just, just like to disclose that, so.
So are you abstaining?
I'm going to abstain.
Well, did you not get the vote, uh, on the school committee, yes or no for?
I did get the vote, yes. And I voted obviously in support.
To me, I, I guess I just don't see that. It's a conflict. I mean, it's two separate places.
I know, but just, I don't want there to be any doubt.
Okay, so the, um, the minutes will read four zero one for the abstention.
Correct.
Great.
Okay, thank you all for your support.
Thank you so much for your time and, uh, we are so excited to see how it turns out.
It'll be revitalized and put to a good use. So thank you very much.
Keep up the good work, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Eric.
Care guys.
Okay, up next, we have the appointment of Chris Reem or Rhine, Reem, for the Palmer Cultural Council.
I make a motion to accept, uh, Chris Reem's appointment to the Cultural Council.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, um, an appointment for Dan Belanger to the Board of Health for a term that goes until 2026.
Is this a new appointment or is Dan currently a member?
Yeah, that was.
A new appointment?
Did somebody resign?
Uh, yes, two people resigned. I got two vacancies.
Okay.
So you still have one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how's that been advertised?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint Dan Belanger to the Palmer Board of Health?
I'll make the motion to appoint Dan.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Up next, we have a department head report from Andrew St. George, our rec director. Thank you.
All right, thank you for, uh, thank you for having me.
Sure.
So just, uh, I, I guess a quick update on where we are with just recreation stuff in general. This month in particular, we have a fairly busy month throughout the, uh, throughout the month. Uh, on Wednesday nights, we're, we are running concerts at Depot Park. Uh, those started last week, so we've got, uh, three more Wednesday nights of those. Uh, we are, uh, planning a grand opening for Hernavitz Park, uh, as the playground is completed. Uh, we, the, the date on that is going to be June 23rd. It is a Friday evening. Uh, advertising on that just went out maybe an hour before, uh, this meeting. Um, we're doing an eighties party. We have a band and we're gonna be showing the movie The Princess Bride. The eighties family classic and maybe best movie ever. I don't know.
What is the part where they change the wine glasses back and forth?
That's, it's a great part.
It's the best part.
So hopefully, uh, I hope to see all of you there for that.
Excuse me, when is that gonna be and where? I didn't catch that part.
Yep, so, uh, Friday, June 23rd. It's gonna start at 5:00 PM. So five to eight will be the band and then eight thirty-ish or so will be the movie. Uh, cause we'll have to be about that time to be dark enough to show it. Uh, we are partnering with the library to show the movie. Uh, they provide the equipment and they have the license to show movies. Uh, so we partner with them for that. Uh, the last thing we have going on this month is, um, on June 24th, which is a, uh, Saturday, we are gonna be running a community chess tournament. It's open to all ages from kindergarten all the way up through. Um, there's different divisions for the different age groups. So we are running that. It's a $5 registration fee and we're giving out trophies to each category, uh, each age group. So, um, that's gonna be held, um, in the gym at Converse. So, uh, that's the, uh, that's the chess tournament. So though, that's, uh, that's what we have going on this month. Just wanted to kinda fill you in on that. Our, our new software also is all up online, uh, the, uh, the MyRec software. So we now have the ability to process registrations as well as, uh, we can, you know, people can pay with cash or check, uh, in sight. Uh, but they can also pay with credit card online now. Uh, that's, so that is all set and running.
I just wanna make two quick points. Uh, also about five minutes before this meeting, I got the bid results for the work that we're gonna do at Depot Park. So we're gonna rehab the, uh, train, train station building there. Uh, we've already had the electrical upgraded, the lights. Uh, John Latour's got the complete plan, um, but the bids came back at, uh, 26,000.
Okay, and that's...
A smaller project than Hernavitz Park.
Right, and that's through the CDBG funds?
Correct, Community Development Block grant funds.
Okay.
Uh, and then the second announcement, which Andrew might be hearing for the first time. Andrew, uh, will be the supreme, uh, controller and arbitrator, uh, scheduler coordinator for all of the youth sports groups. So starting now, that's it. You, you are the man for all of them. If any of them have a problem, they can come and see me, but hopefully you can work it out and they never come see me.
Absolutely.
So fields, scheduling.
Everything, all of it. Yes, I've been asked to make one single point and give that person the authority to make those decisions and Andrew will, shall be it.
Andrew's like, um, I might have some questions, but...
That one's a, a very logical that we, we've been working towards that. This just sort of makes it official.
Yeah, okay.
The, um, the other rumor I heard is that the town is chasing to take over these organizations. We are not doing that, correct?
We, we, we are not doing that. Um, there, you know, it has been, um, there had been some questions, eh, about, about that. And essentially the commitment on my end is that we will not let any of these youth sports organizations fold. As in if one of these youth sports organizations, if their entire board of directors steps down and the sport is not going to happen, at that point, we will keep it running until that board, you know, board can be reestablished. Uh, there's, so I know some, sometimes with these, uh, with youth sports, you've got, you just happen to have a group of people and all their kids age out at the same time.
Yep.
And all of a sudden, a board of 12 members becomes zero members.
Yep.
So, uh, somebody had asked me about what happens if that happens and I, I gave the commitment that we will not let a sport fold unless it is folding because there are no children signing up.
Right.
So if it's folding because nobody's interested, well, that's, yeah, it's a very different story. But we will do whatever we need to do to keep it running until the board gets reestablished. I don't foresee that being an issue.
Right, and I think that one point of contact is gonna help because I know that there's a lot of cross, you know, field use between the organizations and I think that one point of contact is great because then you can't be like, well, that guy told me one thing and that person told me another thing. And then, you know, you don't have conflicting. So if you're the now, then the number one point contact that, and if somebody has this field, then you know about it. Then there should be no, uh, contention.
Absolutely, and that, that is one of the reasons we, uh, we did get the MyRec software in place is it does have the ability to handle facility booking. So it'll issue permit numbers for the facilities. It'll show them on the calendar. So if you wanna use... So for instance, if somebody asks to rent the basketball court, uh, at, at, uh, Converse on Saturday morning, the 24th, it'll already show that it's in use, you know, for the chess tournament. So it won't even let them put through a request. Not that they couldn't contact to ask, but...
Right.
It'll actually, you know, block it out accordingly.
And it assesses, so when they go, um, to rent out field space, it will assess a rental fee for that space as well?
Depending on how we, that, that's, that's a conversation that's gonna, you know, going to have to happen.
Yep.
Um, currently, we don't assess fees to youth sports for rentals. However, uh, like basketball in the rental of Converse, they pay all the cleaning fees and they, all the equipment, like supplies for the bathrooms. So...
Maybe shift that mentality.
If we, if we charge them a rental fee, then we're picking up all those fees, which, you know, is, is, you know, but I know baseball has done a lot of renovations to the fields and, and a lot of the, you know, a lot of the financial support for that work.
Right.
So it, it's kind of a six on one, half dozen on the other. If we take all the money from them, then we're the ones who do all the work. And at the end of the day, it probably is about the same, but it's certainly a mentality shift to an organization that isn't necessarily paying a, a weekly rental fee or something to, to incur that, even if it means they're no longer going to incur those big maintenance costs.
Yeah, but I, I'm thinking more so, so we have some organizations in town, like the basketball group and the baseball group that do a lot of, you know, go above and beyond, like they don't have to do the maintenance and they don't have to supply the bathroom with, you know, cleaning supplies and whatnot. But then we might have another organization who just, um, you know, comes in and...
A men's adult league, say.
Right.
Right.
A men, yeah, if a men's adult league, they come in, like, do they have a fee to use the rental, like to rent, you know, Legion Field or wherever, Ba- Burley Park?
Whether it's softball, baseball, basketball, whatever it is, right?
Yeah, so I can just see like having some uniform policy on, you know, if you're renting, if you're using this space, like you're either paying or you're not paying.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so yeah, that, that'll be something to standardize and make sure that we're the same across the board.
I'd kinda like to rebuttal on that is, eh, I can see where you're seeing the adult leagues, you know, to use the fields and this and that. But to use, eh, youths in this town, to be able to use the fields that it would use their whole lives, to be charged to use them fields, I, I feel is not right. They already pay property taxes and all this and that. Uh, and they do go above and beyond. An adult league, I, I can get, you know, you got, you put together a basketball league or whatever, you, you're adults. But children, their parents already pay enough, I feel. That's my take on, you know, the, the youth shouldn't be strapped with even more. Cause I'm sure there's youths that can't even afford to play the sports.
Yeah.
Well, that, I think, um, what I'm, what I think we should have though is a policy that might say, you know, youth sports versus like, I, maybe an adult sport does not pay the same as a youth sport, or like whatever that is. But I think that there should be a policy in place. So, so we don't have the basketball league or the baseball league who, you know, they go above and beyond. But then, you know, maybe, uh, another sport comes in and they are able to bear the benefit of what the baseball league is putting into, but they're not, you know, kinda contributing. So I just think a pol- a policy in place would make the most sense.
A, a great example, so I mean, youth sports, all, all the youth sports agencies charge fees to play. So the kids are paying money to play.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, just, just using baseball as an example, cause they just did an amazing job at one of the fields down at Burley. We're not charging them anything to use it, but they just sunk $10,000 into a field and that's money that those kids paid to play, plus fundraisers. They do fundraisers as well. So the, uh, I think the idea, if we were to charge for field usage for everybody, it would be that the money they pay for that field is then us paying that $10,000 renovation fee. Yeah, so we're not, we wouldn't be looking for them to, we would wanna make sure kids aren't paying more than they already are.
Right.
Uh, but again, just spelling out a policy saying in-town youth sports.
Yep.
You know?
Part, part of the issue, the way that I see it is, prior to having Andrew and having a, a full-time recreation director, a, a lot of it was falling to myself or my assistant, DPW. And, um, yeah, especially DPW, how short-staffed they were the preceding years. I mean, we're, we've just basically gotten up to full staffing now. And so just take myself for instance, where I'm, I'm not as well-versed in the, the sports that I don't play. And then people come and they're like, well, we'd like to field this and we'd like this done at the field. And it's a challenge for me because I don't necessarily have a full conception of what they're talking about and then I have to try to plan and manage that project. So there was a great benefit to having the people who want something done, uh, pony up and do it themselves. Cause, right, if you want something done the right way, you'd...
Right. Yeah.
So, but now that we have somebody who knows those sports and can interact with those folks and help coordinate, uh, I, I think, you know, with the dedication of the volunteers and the passion and then having an administrative staff support, I, I think it will be done much better.
Okay. Um, I, I, the council's not done with questions yet? The council's not done with questions yet, thank you. I had a question on kind of switching gears to the budget for FY '24. I'm on the subcommittee. Matt's on the subcommittee and as well as Barbara. Um, and we received a breakdown of your budget, but we just had a couple of questions. Mainly, um, there was a budget for one-day events and I just wanted to know like what that number included and if it included, um, any police details that might be needed.
Yeah, so when it comes down to those one-day events, essentially, uh, what would, what it would be is each event, each event would be taken individually as, as, as the event. Uh, and so the, you know, the budget for a particular event would kind of dictate how many of those types of events we could run. If we were gonna have a very large event that was going to have, you know, that was, that was going to have a police detail that did have to get paid out of the rec department.
Yep.
And we needed porta-potties.
Right.
And, and all of that.
Yep.
Then obviously a bigger event like that's gonna take a bigger chunk of that budget.
Okay.
The, my goal would be is if that budget, if the budget allows me to run 10 special events, I run 10. If it only allows me to run two, I run two.
Okay.
Essentially, it's gonna be a, you know, take what I can get and do what I can do with it. I, and I do wanna, I also wanna point out, we, you know, we are working towards making the, you know, making the rec department be self-funded for the most part. Uh, I'm sure you're all aware, when it comes to a revolving account, there are certain things I can't, if I'm shoving a free concert, I can't hire that band out of the revolving account because there's no money coming in from it. So the expectation for me anyway would be that we're not looking at constant increases in a budget. We're looking at, you know, this basically being the source of funding and then the rest of those events, like things like the chess tournament where we need trophies and stuff like that, those would be funded by those programs themselves.
Right.
Uh, so I know, you know, obviously we're the new departments, we've got a budget jump, but I'm just kinda setting the expectation we're not gonna be every year.
Yeah.
You know, double it or whatever, you know?
No, I, I understand. We're just try, we, you know, just liked the extra detail. And then have you applied for a cultural council grants for concerts and events and, and whatnot?
Um, didn't, we have not currently.
Okay.
Um, so the last one, I think we, basically it was the, uh, I think I came in to talk to the cultural council, but it was after the grant writing.
Okay.
Process. I think it's due in September, early September.
Okay.
Um, and by that point, I, you know, just honestly, the, the stuff wasn't on my radar. I have done cultural council grants, um, through previous towns as well as actually personally, uh, with my band. I've...
Yeah.
I've been on both ends of applications, so.
Yeah, and, um, and the town that I worked for previously, we, um, all of their concerts during the summer were funded by the cultural council grant. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the radar for the next round.
And so, and with the cultural council, eh, you know, that everybody's a little different. So, um, when I was in Upton as the Recreation Department, I could not apply for a grant.
Yep.
But I could tell the bands to apply for the grant and then give them the letter of support that I did in fact give them a location and a time and a date. And that letter of support is what the cultural council used.
Yep.
But it gets, that, that gets a little tough for bands because they don't get paid until...
It puts extra work on them, yeah.
Sometimes, you know, a month or two after they play.
Well, so this kind of feeds into my last question about a recreation committee. Where, where are we in the process of forming that rec committee?
I'm not, I'm not sure what, um, you know, I, I haven't done any sort of, you know, reach out or interaction. I, what I, what I've been eyeing more, uh, than a rec committee is more of a, what, what I've been, you know, actually working on is, is kind of like a, I don't know, like I, I guess maybe you'd maybe call it like a youth alliance sort of a thing. So anybody that services youth, whether it's youth sports or arts programs, just kinda getting all those people together. Sort of to work together when we're running events, try not to step on each other's toes and sort of working through that.
Okay.
So more like a Friends of the Palmer Recreation?
No, it, it, it would be more just like, uh, I guess it's kind of more of a, uh, you know, here's a bunch of people that are sort of rowing in the same direction. Let's just get in the same boat.
The only reason why we ask that too is that as a town employee, it's hard because we're under ethics. So we can't go and solicit for local businesses to, to donate money. That's why the senior center has the Friends of the Senior Center and, and that's why we're recommending a, a cultural council or not even a cultural council, a rec...
Rec committee.
A rec committee or even along the lines of a Friends of the Palmer Recreation, a group of people who can go out and do those types of things for you. So you don't have to get involved in all that.
Right, so to have people going out to, to be doing that kind of stuff, it really would have to be a Friends of group, which is a double-edged sword, cause they could raise $10 million for a playground and then decide they don't want a playground, they want a swimming pool. And as the town, we can't tell them no. It's, it's their, their money. But that would...
Pros and cons, right.
Right, but, but they, they would be people who could do actual fundraisers and actually raise money. Obviously, in my role, I can raise money by running programs that have a fee, that then the fee goes to pay for that program. So certainly much more limits in this, in this type of a role.
Right.
Did you have a question?
No.
Matt, did you have a question?
Nope, that was all I had.
Did you have a question? Is anybody else on?
I did, but I forgot it.
Welcome to the age group.
I know.
You can always reach out if you come up with something, you know, afterwards with questions.
Okay. Uh, do you have a, a quick, quick question?
Will you be, uh, assigning Legion Field to?
Uh, yep, so, uh, Legion Field would also be, would fall into the, uh, the, the field and sports category.
Last month, I had a question, the fee schedule, what the fee schedule was for using Legion Field. There was no set fee, I guess. I've talked to a person that last year paid $200 out of town. Paid $200 and whoever was assigned to turn on the lights and says, I need $200. So the guy gave him $200 and he says, I need a receipt. The guy said, I can't give you a receipt. I'm giving you $200. I want a receipt.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's kind of the point of this is, you know, through the software.
And where does it go?
Yep. So this is...
Well, as of, as of 10 minutes ago, it's me. Prior to 10 minutes ago.
Yeah, who knows?
The check is sent to the Recreation Director?
Well, the Recreation Department, yeah. So it, it doesn't get to come to me directly. It will, but it will. Yeah, any, any, any fees collected, uh, will come to me and they'll be then allocated appropriately to whatever account.
And you set up a fee schedule?
Yep, uh, yeah, I, I'll set up a fee schedule. I'll be working with, uh, the agencies that currently use it. Uh, cause I know Legion Field especially gets a lot of use from a lot of different groups. So that'll all be, all be, all be stuff that we will be working through, uh, going forward now.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
I'm with Heidi too, so.
Okay, I, right, up next, we have a department head report from Heidi, our conservation agent.
Hi there.
Hi.
And has everybody here met Heidi?
No.
Alright, so this is Heidi Manarino. Uh, she is our conservation agent. Uh, she was hired, uh, earlier this year.
Yep, back in February. Thank you for having me tonight.
Excellent, thank you. So what are you here to talk to us about?
So I'm here to discuss an exciting opportunity to potentially acquire a parcel of land along the Chickapie River. It connects with the Redbridge State Park, which if you haven't been down there in a while, do yourself a favor, take a nice walk because it is gorgeous down there. We saw a bald eagle the other day when we were down there. And we actually prepared a short video for you to summarize this potential acquisition.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess my first question is, uh, the video was, I know it was emailed out. Did everybody get a chance to watch it? I know I've heard a couple have watched it.
I've watched it. Have you watched it?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
Okay, then I would like to play it because I will, I know myself and if I try to summarize a five-minute video, it'll take 20 minutes. So. Hi, I'm Andrew, Recreation Director.
The top one, Andrew. There you go.
Here for the Town of Palmer.
I'm Heidi, Conservation Agent for the Town of Palmer.
We are so excited to be coming to you today from this beautiful property right along the Chickapie River. This 13-acre lot represents a lot of unique opportunities for the conservation of our natural resources as well as the ability to provide both passive and active recreational opportunities for the residents. Furthermore, the acquisition of this land will work towards a lot of the goals that have been set forth in the town's open space and recreation plan.
By connecting with two other parcels of town-owned land, we are ensuring that the entire northern portion of the Chickapie River is protected by either the town or the state. And this also accomplishes the goal of creating regional connectivity to the Redbridge State Park by expanding our trail system along the Chickapie River. Not only are there well-developed trails already established in this area, this trail also showcases some of the beautiful diversity that riverfront areas can provide. This parcel of land contains a wide array of tree species, including sugar maples, big-toothed aspen, yellow birch, hemlock, white oak, mountain ash, American elm, and that's just to name a few. You can even find some endangered American chestnuts right along the trail. The great thing about tree and plant diversity is it also provides a diversity of habitat, which means this land can be suitable to house many different kinds of wildlife. Bald eagles, pink fishers, billated woodpeckers, and black bears are all likely to inhabit this area. Preserving these riverfront areas is critical. Preserving these riverfront areas is critical to these animals by creating corridors where they can migrate, find food and shelter with little disturbance from humans. And we are increasing the connectivity between the spaces they're allowed to use. This reduces habitat fragmentation that is hurting many native species. Now, if we take a look into the water, the Chickapie River itself can hold a great deal of biodiversity. Lard and small-mouth bass, golden shiner, bluegill, piperel are just a few examples of the species you can find in the Chickapie River.
This diversity is great for recreational sport fishers. This land already sees its fair share of users and it has some amazing fishing locations. There are several small trails that run right down to the waterfront and great fishing can happen even right off the wall of the old dam. Right next to the old dam is a beautiful sandy river beach. With some minor cleanup, mostly removal of downed branches, this beach offers many fun recreational opportunities. It can be a great place to relax along your hike, pull up your kayak and take a breather, or to spend a fun summer day on the shore in the sand. And of course, the beach can represent another great fishing spot.
Conserving riverfront areas by keeping them vegetated and relatively undeveloped can greatly improve water quality and provides better habitat for fish. Trees and plants at the river's edge can provide spawning habitat, increase food and oxygen availability, and shade the water to minimize algae growth. The roots of trees and other vegetation along the river can trap sediments, pollutants, and disease-causing bacteria before they reach the water. This is not only good for the fish, but also any boaters or paddlers taking advantage of the river. Palmer is one of the few places in Massachusetts that has much of the riverfront area designated as densely developed, meaning that a 25-foot protection is incurred rather than 200-foot. This means that it is even more important to preserve riverfront land where we can to slow surface runoff, provide flood storage, provide groundwater recharge, and give habitat to all the incredible wildlife we have in Palmer.
From a recreational standpoint, this area has some phenomenal features. As mentioned earlier, it has an existing trail that is already a continuation of the Red Bridge State Park Trail System. Currently, this trail crosses into some existing town property in a few areas, but it's mostly on this privately-owned land. This trail is an old rail bed that is in great shape and ready for hikers immediately. In fact, many people already use the trail, making it an ideal resource for the town to invest in. There is a great clear spot near the old dam wall and beach that will make a perfect picnic area with the addition of a few picnic tables. This trail is fairly smooth and flat and it makes it ideal for individuals who may have difficulty with other, more challenging trails in town. The walk features many beautiful views, including some great views of the river and wildlife. This land represents a great investment for the town of Palmer. There's a lot of recreational opportunities here, especially with this existing trail system and boating and fishing spots. This area already sees heavy year-round use, especially in the warmer months. And its connection to the Red Bridge State Park Trail System really provides a great resource for the residents of the town of Palmer.
We are so excited for this opportunity and look forward to countless fun years of use for generations to come.
That is a nice spot. I've been there.
That was very well put together.
Did Empact help with that, by the way?
First take.
No, I, I did that in the office.
No, that's fine. No, I'm just curious. Yeah, no, it came out very well.
Yeah, thank you.
So just a couple more things we wanted to hammer home. We provided a, a page on, in your packet about this, but the open space and recreation plan calls out, I believe it was 21 different goals that this would satisfy. But to really quickly summarize, it would tie in a lot of goals with establishing trails and recreation opportunities along waterways in Palmer and protect environmentally sensitive areas. And how I see protection is there's two sides of it. The literal physical protection by purchasing and preventing development on this land. But then also by sharing really incredible, beautiful, natural areas with the residents and providing recreational opportunities. That translates to a different kind of protection, which inspires people to care for these areas, not just on this parcel of land, but in their own backyards as well.
So really what we're looking at, so I guess what we're here for specifically today is we would like to pursue the, the land grant, which is a, a state grant specifically to acquire property like this. So the asking price on the property is $100,000. It's 13.3 acres, again, right on, right along the river. And the town of Palmer qualifies for a 70% reimbursement with a land grant. So we would expect 70,000 of that to be reimbursed. So really, all we're asking for today is essentially the, essentially kind of that, that vote of support to say, yes, go ahead and continue to pursue this project. So we're not, we're not asking you to write us a check or anything today, just...
When is the land grant due?
So the land grant is due July 13th. So we have, yeah, we have about a month. We've, you know, we've pulled some of the stuff together already, so a month is enough time. But we, yeah, we also didn't wanna show up, you know, the meeting right before it's due.
Right.
Essentially, the matching fund to the grant is, is $30,000, so.
So my question is, so it is going to connect to the Red Bridge State Park? And I know in the letter it mentioned that the, the owner of the land is talking with the DCR as well as the town. So either way, kind of making it a public resource. So what would, I guess, why should Palmer have the land versus just extending the state park?
So this is, so the, you know, this is gonna be my opinion on this, okay? But I would have a hard time imagining that where the Red Bridge State Park area is so well-developed, I would have a hard time imagining that if DCR got this land, that they would actually make access from the Palmer side. So Palmer residents would still be going into Belcher Town to use a Belcher Town property to access the park. With, with our, you know, with our area here, I've got the map up on the, on the screen there. But if you look right over on this, the, the section that sticks up here off of Barker Street, we would be able to put in a parking lot there.
Okay.
So essentially opening up access to not just our land, but then Palmer residents would be able to access the Red Bridge State Park through Palmer as well.
As of now, there's really no parking there. You have to park on private property.
Yeah, so you have to park on private property.
Dirt bikes all the way down there, way back when, when you could. But for me, to your question is, I'd rather see Palmer have control and be able to utilize and see fit how they wanna do it versus dealing with the state.
This, this does also border on two other town-owned properties that are both land.